All right, Miss, Miss In from your live.
All right, we are now on Finance Committee, report of the October 5 meeting.
Sure, I will take that one. So, at our meeting this morning, Accounting Office Manager Peggy McKenzie reported on preliminary district financial results through the end of September. State subsidy has been received and recorded. All five town revenues have been received and recorded as well. As we continue to progress through the year, doing very well, our operating revenues exceed expenses again this month, and our expenses remain in line with our budget. Food service, as every year, you'll see the dramatic deficit of 135,000, always behind the start of the year till revenues start flowing from the state. This is certainly common practice for us, and we will catch up as the year moves forward. And adult ed revenues exceed expenses, and expenses are in line with budget. Similar report to every month, Miss Inver.
Okay, question, anybody? Nancy?
So Carl, while looking at the revenues, and I'm noticing that we have 22% of the years. And then I look down at Article 5, and we've expended 26%, and Article 11 is 26.3. The, I guess on the, so did we have to hire extra staff that we've expended 26% of this year so far?
No, salaries are about 27%, because it's by paychecks divided by 26. So we've done 27% of paychecks. So my personnel line is around 26, 27%, with three quarters of the month, so 25. So any number in between 25, 27 is pretty normal in that regard.
I was just looking for those that were...
Yes, off the range. So I'll give you just a couple others. Debt service is very low at 4.5, because our middle school bond flows through that line. That's a big one that we haven't recorded as of yet. 11.7 on transportation. We're going to catch up with our bus payments as the year goes forward. So that'll come around. Other instruction, a lot of our coaches are there. The fall season has not ended. That's why it's 8.7. We pay out fall coaches. We'll start catching back up to the norm. So those are some of your strays, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any else? Construction, they're meeting also this morning on October 5.
The state police would like to use office space at our middle school for paperwork. Are you going to touch face up?
Absolutely, Jenny. You can keep rolling.
All right. The construction committee did support the request, but Carl would have explained further. We are planning to install some more sprinklers at the high school to address an area that was missed originally. The construction committee also supported that plan. And we have a new, ordered a new scoreboard for the high school game field as that one was not there. We discussed going forward Esser projects. We would potentially like to add a new multipurpose court at the middle school, and the outdoor classroom structures are progressing well. Elementary and middle school is complete. High school will be complete soon.
Perfect. So to add some detail on what Jenny said, great job Jenny. So Brian Hink reached out. It's something that we've talked about for a long time. I think it's a double benefit. It's a benefit for the state police, it's a benefit for us. We'll have police presence at our school out front. They're looking to make this sort of a hub of their local area, so you'll get increased police presence at no cost. They'll have a place, a safe place to do their paperwork out of the public view. Mike Lane was able to find a space. They'll wire their own network at their cost. There'll be no cost to the taxpayer, at least from the school side. I couldn't think of a better, nicer arrangement to have police presence in our school. We're benefiting them, they're benefiting us. It's just tremendous. It's one of the coolest things I think we've done. So I'm thrilled with that. The sprinkler, just a two-five-a-point. Dylan Capano will know. There's a spot in right field that they missed originally that burns out every year towards right field in the tennis courts. We're just going to pop a few heads there, so we don't have one swath of burnt-out field. And the new scoreboard, I know the ladies here, Brooke and Emma, have probably asked about 7,000 times about the high school scoreboard, just to get it on tape and on record, so we're not being frivolous with money or whatever. We have put hours of time, effort, spare parts, wires, et cetera, trying to rehab the board that is there. It is beyond repair. We've had an electrician look at the board. It is time for a new scoreboard. We've purchased a new scoreboard. People seem thrilled with that, and you could take the words right out of my mouth. Supply chain issues. We're seven weeks out on getting the board, and at least another seven weeks. So by New Year's Eve, we opt to have a new scoreboard on our fall athletic field. But for next year, we will have a new scoreboard. We've got to exactly match the baseball field hockey and softball scoreboard. So same company, those have been good for us for a while. So that's the school board. The other one that I'll have us vote later, so part of my report, so I won't steal my own thunder. Sue Day, I think it was Nancy mentioned, and I'll mention yes. Sue Day is able to certainly do great things with money and get a lot of value here. We are thinking that we may have some room in the Esser III grant. There was originally a thought about getting a multipurpose court at our middle school, i.e. pickleball, tennis, basketball. Our middle school kids don't really have a place to play, since we added the modular outback. So we'd love to write that into the Esser III grant. We think it complies with the state having kids be outside and spread out. So we'll look for your blessing officially, in hopefully about 10, 15 minutes when I do my actual report. But construction seemed supportive of all these things this morning. I want to thank Jenny and that team. They're always great to work with. That's construction.
Hi Nancy.
I noticed that some of the other school districts are looking at air conditioning in their buildings. We had talked at one time about doing a five-year projection about, you know, X number of dollars will be put into a fund in order, so that we can complete the air conditioning cycle. Is that still on, somewhere on the horizon?
That's a good question, Nancy Perkins. So I think it's something we should kick back to construction. We haven't let it go, Nancy, but with the high school main office renovation as part of Esser, we'll at least have cooling spots in every building. Every office space slash library in every school will be cool locations. To do the entire school unit with roof units and splits, and now I'm starting to get a little out of my depth, but to do them all that way would certainly be costly. Do window units everywhere. We have had this discussion, where do you store them when they're not in use? This year, we had about one or two hot days in September. We'll probably have five or six at the end. And where do you store them? And summer, of course, would be hot. But when the kids are in session, 175, it's about 10 days a year, and I realize that's probably getting more and more, and going to be more and more as we move forward. So it's certainly something we should get back on the table for construction.
We've kind of tabled it because of electrical issues. The electrical couldn't support it, but...
And Johnny did explore electrical?
Well, SAD 6 is doing it. So the good news is the next floor.
Sure.
So what are they doing? What are their costs, et cetera, et cetera? So you can sort of say, okay, maybe this is what we need to do. And I guess what brought it to mind was tomorrow's supposed to be 70, so I'm thinking about, you know, the kids up on the second floor and...
Hard to murder when you're uncomfortable, for sure. Great, Nancy, we'll get it. Thank you Jenny, we'll get it back on our list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, are we getting the question structures? Have they been used yet?
Yes, I see, and Sue would be better than me, but I see on the school email account, I'd like to use it today. I'd like to use it at lunch. I'd like to use it tomorrow for this class. I'd like to do pre-kan recess under this thing. The elementary one, for sure, is being used with regularity. Even I see that for my role. They're requesting it all the time. I think they love it. Let Sue speak more to it if you know more than that.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Yeah, we're thrilled with it.
Is the end of that. Kirk on report, we have our student report, first one of the year.
Before we go, I'd like to introduce Junior Emma Belandry, who will be joining, all right. Joining our team with Brooke Landry, our senior representing, so those will be our two students of the year. We appreciate them being here.
Emma, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? We kind of know Brooke.
I play three sports. I play soccer, basketball, and softball. I'm a junior, like she said.
Any clubs, extracurricular activity other than sports?
School board representatives.
Yeah, I'm in the Snow Leadership Institute. So that's pretty fun to be able to go and meet new people around the state of Maine.
And she serves great ice cream.
Second, so I just had a question for the two of you, you know, Brooke especially, so you look at next year and you go, so where do you see yourself next year, and where do you see yourself in two years? Any thoughts about careers that you want, either one of you?
Well, I'll probably be in college by then.
I know, but studying what?
Probably like finance, economics, business.
Take care of your father, right?
That's the hope, Nancy. That's the hope. You hit me right in the heart with where she's going to be leaving me. I'm going to start crying. It's going to be awful.
And Emma, you in two years?
I know I want to go to college, but I am not sure what for yet.
It'll hit here, maybe. All right, Carl, floor is yours.
So we have a lot of interesting news to report tonight. Last Thursday, September 29, members of the Olympia Snow Women's Leadership Institute had the opportunity to travel to Bangor for the annual Fall Forum. This conference allows for the young women of the institute to interact with other members of the institute from all schools across Maine, acquire new leadership skills, discuss values, and learn about making their voices heard. On Friday, September 23, sophomores Margaret Brewster, Cameron Baron, and Kira Hicks attended a statewide outdoor leadership conference with Mr. Mouski and Mr. Kla at the Maine State YMCA camp in Winddrop, along with about 90 other student leaders from around the state. They participated in team-building activities, seminars on consensus building, and other activities. All reported that it was a great event. Based on their performance on the PSAT, Thomas Burley, Haley Butterworth, and Brooke Landry are three seniors that were awarded National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award from the College Board. Thomas Burley also received the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Haley Butterworth qualified as a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship Competition based on her October 2021 PSAT scores. Each year, only about 16,011 graders qualify as semifinalists. She is the first student in 10 years to make the cup. On September 22, college representatives came from Yumein, Oregon to educate current high school students about their programs and admission processes. The extended learning program has been a great success. The students that have become a part of the program have loved the opportunity to discuss possible job shadows and internships to create experiences and understand what potential career paths may entail. Okay, the NIASC Accreditation Group came to our school on Monday and Tuesday to analyze our curriculum, our building, and teaching and learning. Different students were selected to speak out about the different activities that they are involved in in our school and the work that they've completed. We'll be able to report on that more next month. We are extremely pleased to announce that after undergoing the JPA inspection in 2020, our very own Jerty C. was recognized as an honor unit with distinction. This is the highest honor that can be awarded through this inspection, and our school is one of the eight that were selected in New England. Congratulations to Jerty C. For the upcoming events, this week's spirit week at the high school in preparation for the big homecoming dance this Saturday. The homecoming games are as follows. On Thursday, October 6, cross-country will have a meet and mine it, and football plays at home at 7:00 PM against Old Orchard Beach. On Friday, October 7, girls' soccer will play at Old Orchard Beach, and boys' soccer will play at Lake Region. Fall sports, more than halfway over and hopeful of making it to playoffs, so go Hawks. PSATs are being offered to 10th and 11th graders on October 12. On September 21, Jerty C. took a field trip and went deep-sea fishing. Everyone had a great time, and they caught a lot of fish to take home. Jerty C. will also be marching in the Freiburg Fair Parade on October 8. NHS is looking forward to accepting new members, and is looking to have the induction ceremony on November 10. So it's been a great start to the year.
Any questions for our student press?
We will send the board members invite to the NHS induction ceremony, so we should send those officially.
Record on committee report.
We have various updates for the curriculum at the curriculum committee. Enrollment in first grade is over 20 for class, and the seventh grade is large also. There are classes of 25 and 26 in the seventh grade. For staffing, nearly every position is filled, and it was great. There has been great enthusiasm about the extended learning opportunities program. There were students asking about it on day one of school. There's some collaboration with the health center. They're going to do dental screenings for schools. They would do vision screens, but they don't have anybody presently to do that. They also are going to prioritize the mental health, any mental health issues of our students, and provide parent education about substance abuse. Community service guidelines, they are, were reviewed, and we are thinking of perhaps allowing 10 hours per semester for mentoring middle school students. Our next meeting is next week, next Wednesday at 3.
Any questions, Ms. Perkins? So anything to add?
I don't know if this is a good time. I wanted to share a little video that was on Channel 6 tonight. Dr. Landry is...
It's a great time, this day.
So in case you didn't get to see it, Ms. Bryan, our finalist for Main Teacher of the Year, was showcased on Channel 6.
I'm taping that right now.
Oh, great, so hopefully you'll have...
If you shut the lights, missing room, they might see better on camera.
So this, I recorded this from my phone on my computer, so it's not perfect, but I wanted to make sure to be able to share it with you tonight.
Ashley Bryant is a teacher in Hyrum, and she has a special skill.
Flip to page number 18.
She can get her fourth-grade students to love math.
She's very nice. We have so much fun with her.
But Ashley wasn't always this comfortable in the classroom.
This is the district that I went to, and I was one of those kids that was really nervous about going to school.
Nervous until her second-grade teacher taught her to be excited.
I thought, I want to be that person for somebody. I want to be a Mrs. Richmond for somebody.
Her kids have made it clear, she is. You get the notes, you get the emails, you get the visits and the hugs, and it's the best part. Being with the kids is really my heart. Heather Anderson from...
So that's the only part, Ms. Bryan. But I thought she represented Chalky Alley incredibly well, so we're very proud. And I think I shared, we know that she will not be the Teacher of the Year, but we're still incredibly proud of her and how she represented herself in our district, so.
The final four, 2023, yes, Ms. Gay?
Yes, that is true.
Nancy? So what is, are we as a board going to do to make this special?
Good question.
Something I'm assuming is going to go in the shopping guide or something?
We do have a few things we're working on, and we will be recognizing her at our annual teacher celebration, so.
No, we'll... I don't know if any of you have ever seen, and Sue, maybe you want to talk about the amount of work that goes into this. It is phenomenal. It isn't just, they, you know, they, you pass the first hurdle, but then it's, so...
She's had to do multiple presentations and speeches, a portfolio. It was an intensive day that we had a committee of six here visiting, so it is an extensive process.
They observed her classroom?
Mm-hmm, twice.
I think, no, I, we need to think of something.
I was just going to say.
A step up here.
There's some ideas at me, and we'll go from there. Either tonight, or email me or something?
Email. If that makes sense, think it over and...
That's good.
Her name was up on the outside board for a long time. That was nice.
Yeah, very cool.
You might want to shut that off.
Yeah, can you turn off the TV? Can you turn off the TV?
Yes, I can.
Is it more teachers?
No, not exactly, Julia.
It is not possible to turn that off if you're back wondering, Apple TV that you cannot control.
None of us were there.
Yeah, but wasn't that, did that come out late?
Well, this committee, we are meeting October 21. That will be our first meeting, Lake Region. Let's just sweep on that.
Missy Jordan, I think Mr. Perkins attended Lake Region.
Yeah. I thought it was going to be in the, I know they...
Do you have it, Mr. Perkins?
No, no, I did not bring it.
Would you like a copy? Or would you like to just, whatever you like to do, Mr. Perkins? I have one for you if you'd like it. You can go from memory. You can do whatever you like.
I wasn't expecting to, I'll go from memory. It won't take as long. It was a pretty interesting meeting. They took us through the automotive shop and body shop, and showing us what they did there. The interesting part to me was that they were actually repairing vehicles for people in the public. The superintendent's vehicles in there have the brakes renewed. So I hope nobody had anything against the superintendent. Anyway, they had another vehicle in there that they were padding out. It was a relatively new vehicle, and the parts were valuable enough so that they could be sold on the market. There was, they're planning on, in the automotive shop, a part of it, maybe the size of this room, is dedicated to small engines and lawnmowers, whatever, even outboard motors. And it's encroaching on the space that they need to do vehicles. And so they applied for a grant to get a new space, twice or three times as big as this, on the backside to be added on, which will be beneficial to, you know, all of our students, all the schools. The wood shop, excuse me, I shouldn't say wood shop, the...
Industrial?
Construction part of it. They were framing a building out there for, I don't know what it's going to be used for. It was about the size, I would say, of what we got for tables here. It's something that people don't realize, and I've seen contractors that get paid that don't realize it, that if it's going to be 12 feet that way and 20 feet this way, you just don't measure off 12 by 20, because you're going to measure the diagonals, because if you don't get the diagonals right, it's not square. And they were teaching the kids that. It was pretty interesting to watch that happen. The other thing is, is they were doing small wood projects. There was a patent template for an Adirondack chair hanging on the wall with all the different pieces that they break out and copy. They also had a portion of doing cabinetry, which I was very impressed with. Doing cabinetry is a whole different level than framing a building. It was, it was really, really a great opportunity to watch this. So David Moss, any questions? And like always, my hand was in the air. I was watching these instructors, and I just wanted to know what their certifications were and so forth. And they were not school teachers. They were tradespeople who had taken classes and so forth, and had done the work, I shouldn't say minimum, but amount of work that they needed to, to be certified to teach in the high school. And the one thing different there than in the regular classroom, which is quite common on construction sites, there was a radio blaring in the background all the time. And if you, if you go to construction sites, they all bring their radios there and get them going. And so anyway, it was, it was really informative, and I would follow to continuing going on these. And I wish I'd had notification I was going to do this, because I could give you a half an hour's worth.
Did a great job going along here. I think you covered, I would say, to further about this point, we have very good enrollment at Lake Region. Just doing a quick math, 73 students enrolled in our Lake Region program. High school of approximately 300. That's, you know, significant amount of our kids to access those programs and enjoy it over there despite the long bus ride.
I do have one question, and if you may not know this, I may have to ask it next time I go. I saw one of our kids who I happen to know was enrolled in the, what's the program called that they get a smattering of everything?
DVO, Diversified Occupation.
So I guess my question would be, I see that that person is also in that, again, as a sophomore. Can you spend all four years in that? Or is it, do you have to make, if you mind, do you want to focus on that?
Typically, right now, I'm looking, there's a DO9, DO10, and then I think they flow into 11th, oh, sorry. Oh, Mr. Stevenson, please jump in.
I, I used to work there in the DO program over at Lake Region, and it's basically for eighth, ninth, and 10th graders. There are some special cases where you can continue on with that, but they basically filter you on to the upper-level programs where you find out really what you like, because in ninth and 10th, you still don't know what you like. So you might find that you start out in carpentry, but then, hey, I want to go into the law enforcement or something else like automotive, because you really like working with the small engines and things like that, so.
So by 11th grade, you should be focusing in one direction or another?
Yeah, usually they filter you in, and usually they start the interview process with the juniors. It's like an actual interview with a lot of the teachers, and they get kind of their first job experience right there, going from the DO program into their program that they choose.
And so the exposure leads them to make that decision as an 11th grader?
Exactly.
Perfect. We have the right person here, Mr. Perkins. There you go.
So Brad, how many schools have a rep like you that come to those meetings? And do they come?
Freiburg, typically, they're guidance people. I don't know if there's another school board member there at all. I'm there because I'm very interested in it, because I think we need to do more with this. Which brings up something else. Having spent two days at Freiburg there, Hunter Dearborn has a booth up there, and they're grabbing everybody they can to talk to, even people that are in their late 70s. They, Bath Iron Works does. I'm wondering if we can get some of these companies to come here. I just think that we are not doing enough, we're not being fair to these kids. We're not letting them know what's out there, that they have other options in life. And I think that we need to get on to our administration, guidance, whatever, to do this, to, you know, we've got one right in the corner, the Contour 360, a machine shop. And the people in those machine shops get paid very, very well. You know, it's three and a half, four and a half miles down the road. And I'll bet that if you ask, get on a school bus that goes by there, or any, go into the high school, ask them what Contour 360 was, they'd all look at it with a confused look, with no idea of what's going on or what's available right here.
Didn't we have a job there once in the cafeteria?
Yeah, and I think we're going to take a step towards Brad's direction in about seven minutes, I'm estimating.
I'm going to take a moment to chip in on this also. My father was taught at the Hartford Trade School down in Connecticut for 28 years. Connecticut has five regional trade schools throughout the state, and their purpose is to provide a workforce for the industry in Connecticut. Connecticut is the small tool industry center of the nation. There's more small tool industries there than you could shake a stick at.
Also Pratt Whitney.
Pardon?
Pratt Whitney, too.
Oh, yeah. And so it's very functional and very important, and it works well. He taught math, but his last five years, his job was in administration to travel to all the high schools and recruit students who wanted to come to the trade school. And how that would work is, after their ninth grade in high school, they would start at trade school and go four years there. One week was classroom, one week was trade, trade school, and be all that we threw out the whole year. And it worked very well. And it's a, it's a strong system to support labor force. And I think, I don't want to get into politics, but last night in the debate, we were talking about young people leaving from state after high school. And if Maine developed a good trade school system, they would develop a workforce, and then there'd be more industry that would move to Maine and be more stable population.
Thank you.
Okay.
How come guys slap the table?
Pardon?
You slap the table, then you slap the table. I guess you're making your point.
Another, one of my favorite industries in Connecticut, he even mentioned Smith &amp; Wesson.
But I did mention is the Hartford School had 13 trades in the school. It's a tremendous system.
Thank you. Lake Region is done, adult ed, so you're gonna be, be being October 17th, Maggie, huh?
Correct.
Actually, no, I am.
Great.
And tech has not met yet.
Correct.
Policy committee, Sue, I'm gonna need your help with this. We, we met on September 14th and we went over the policies that you are going to look at for first read this evening. But Sue, I also had another one, G V N, which was family and medical leave.
We didn't finish that one.
We decided to table that, right?
Where, the committee didn't finish going through that one.
Because those are all new regs from D O E.
Yes, G V N, family medical leave is a substantial change.
So anyway, that was the bulk of our meeting, were these four policies that we are going to take action on. So consideration to approve the following policies as first read. We can do them all together, right?
Sure.
Okay. A C, non-discrimination, equal opportunity and affirmative action. I J O C, school volunteers. The committee found that quite interesting. J I C I A, weapons violence and school safety. And thanks to everyone for listening to Colonel Nag, we were able to give the okay on that. J J I F, management of concussions and other head injuries. That also was very interesting to the committee.
So two things, if I could jump in before we, before we vote. So one, that's gonna be important in about four minutes. I feel like I'm the commercial countdown when stuff's coming. In the volunteer policy, persons interested in volunteering their time and services for the Extended Learning Opportunity Program shall complete the MSAD 55 volunteer application. We might amend that, because I worked with Drummond. Again, I'll talk in about four minutes about that, and will conduct a criminal background check, but it will not be D O E fingerprinting for our E L O people, but we did work with Drummond to make sure we're covered. I mean, I just want you to know what you're voting, I'm gonna bring this up again in about four minutes. That's the volunteer one. And thanks for all your input on J R T C. I believe they will conduct their sessions in the elementary school gymnasium as discussed, so. I thought that was a great collaborative effort by our team.
That was your suggestion. Good.
So there you go. All right, now it's all yours, Missy.
All right, so I am looking for a motion then for this action item, so.
Jolene?
Second.
Bradley?
All those in favor of approving these four policies, please raise your hand. Thank you. Done.
Before you do this one, Missy, would anybody object to switching just for Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Capano? I'll do my report and then we can do the two executive sessions and send those folks. Is that okay? I don't, I'm not, that's parliamentarian. Do, do we need to amend the agenda to switch that around, or can we just switch it?
I think it's okay, yeah.
I'm moving.
A man, okay. So. Wait, motion, Bradley, amend agenda to switch order. Bradley.
All those in favor?
And Jenny seconded.
It's switched.
Great. All right, perfect. Thank you. Look at that, just talked myself into talking some more. How about that?
Want a cup of water?
I'm rolling. No, 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 I'm in my prime. So superintendent's report, and then we'll get you folks out of here. So fall learning plan, that's just our plan for coming back to school. I just want to say that it's been an unbelievable start to the school year. It's been the most normal that we've had in a, in a few goes. We've had a few reports of COVID cases here and there. People let us know and they're out, but it hasn't had nearly the same level of disruption that it's had for the past two years. I think our, our students, our faculty, our staff, very happy to be here. It's homecoming, look at the high school. It's sort of back to homecoming of old. There'll be a pep rally tomorrow. There'll be a homecoming dance Saturday night. So we are pretty close to normal functioning in our school system. It's been a wonderful start. I just want to give you some positive heads up there. A couple other things, I'll keep rolling with the positive news. N I S C, I know our student rep said that they'll bring it up next month, and I don't want to completely steal what they're going to say next month, but Sue Day and I had a chance to meet with the N I S C committee as they were leaving at the end. They had, and first off, I just want to publicly thank our school board. They had rave reviews and get it on TV about our school board's presentation in the Sunday night meeting. They thought you were thoughtful, articulate, had your pulse in the district. They said your level of interaction with them was unique to any other district that they've gone to. So publicly thank you to our school board. True story, you can't make this up, honest. I have Miss Day as my witness. So they thought it was tremendous.
When did that?
Sunday night.
Unique can have many different meanings.
I'll stick with unique, Mr. Perkins, but honestly, they, they were, they thought, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think they thought our high school administration, faculty, staff, children were outstanding. Their perception was that we're meeting, exceeding in, in the areas. We'll get our official report, so I don't know how much I can say, but they were overflowingly positive from board to everyone in our district. It was a tremendous visit. Britt Wolf's to be commended. He did a ton of time and effort making sure it ran smoothly. Our faculty and staff stepped up. I think our kids interviewed with those folks. Mr. Stevenson, if I'm misquoting how that went, you can certainly correct me, but I think it was awesome. I think you should be proud of the school district we have and the high school that we have here. I'm thrilled with how it went. So a lot of good work going. And you definitely got a shout out by the, by the group. So thank you, board, for your participation Sunday night. They were blown away. N I S C, so good news there. So now I think we have some work to do, almost. Just a, this is just a heads up. We are planning, and you know this, and I think we said last time the board should vote. I'm not ready to have that happen, but we are planning a spring New York City trip for seniors and a spring Quebec trip for juniors. We'll be back around with more details as spring gets closer. Just a heads up. Another one new to the, the table, I think baseball is potentially thinking about a trip in April break for playing in a little bit warmer weather. We've extended that thought to softball. I'm not sure they're going to do that. I don't want to get stuff on TV before coaches and stuff flows through the system. Just heads up, there's some stuff in the works about potential trips, fundraising efforts, that kind of thing. We'll do it as we get closer, but just so you don't run into someone and you're completely unaware, those are just heads up for right now. All right, now time for the real work. So E L O program updates. I just read you the policy, and just for clarity, I know it was a few minutes ago. We changed our volunteer policy to say, persons interested in volunteering their time and services for the Extended Learning Opportunities Program that the students talked about. I think Jolene talked about, Sue Day has talked about. It's gonna be great for kids to appoint Bradley. I think our E L O coordinator can reach out to Contour 360 and, and Dearborn and those kinds of places and connect our kids with those kinds of experiences. It's gonna be great. I think it's a step in that direction. We felt like putting the criminal history background check on those individuals, A, would be time consuming. We can protect them this way. I think it was Nancy's suggestion. We have acknowledgements of risk for parents written by Drummond Woodson. We have agreements for the companies written by Drummond Woodson, and we have the original company form that they're going to submit to us that will allow us to run a background check on the contact person at the company. You should think at the level, we're trying to protect kids, we want everybody to know that. But say we send a kid to UNUM. It's unrealistic to C H R C fingerprint check everybody that works in that big building in UNUM. That doesn't even make sense. We can't do it. Parents are gonna have to know anybody watching. We're assuming some risk. We're not checking every single person that works at every company that we send our kids to, but we're spelling them in agreement with parents. If they choose to allow their kids, they'll at least go in eyes wide open. We're gonna volunteer check. What I'm asking for permission for, and maybe you should vote on this. Can I act on this policy, because we're just a landing, this program has started? Can I just volunteer check E L O people starting right now tomorrow, even though it's only a first read? Because if we wait for a second, we're waiting to do this another month. I love permission to act on this as if it was enacted. I did run it by Drummond. They didn't think that was an issue, as long as eyes wide open. Board, you know, I'm only volunteering, checking the contact person for E L O organizations. Is that okay?
Okay with it? Everybody will vote.
Let's do an efficient, so let me write something up.
Do we need to change the agenda?
Oh, probably. Let's amend it again to add this vote.
Oh, so the E L O program, so it's underneath that.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Just taking action on what's already on the agenda. Good, better than me. So I'm gonna say consideration to approve conducting background checks on E L O volunteers effective immediately. That's the consideration.
All right, motion.
So.
Bradley? Oh, go ahead.
Do that and do discussion.
Oh, second.
Jenny? Discussion. I got Brad and Jenny on consideration to approve conducting background checks only on yellow vol, E L O volunteers effective immediately.
Discussion. I need to put something in there about the parents so that you see the other part. I mean, you're saying we're not gonna do it, but you're not saying that.
With signed agreement, you mean?
That how we are covering ourselves.
With signed agreement in place.
Yes.
So new motion, Brad, I hope you're still motion, and Jenny, I hope you're still second. Consideration to approve conducting background checks on E L O volunteers effective immediately with signed agreements in place.
Parental.
Parental.
Signed parental. I don't think that's what they're called. I think they're risk agreements, but we get the signed parental agreements in place.
So what?
Bradley's still good, Jenny's still second, good, great.
Now we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Thank you all so much. So that one's done.
This is getting exciting to do that.
That's gonna be super cool. I think it's great. We have a lot of interest. I think kids are excited. I think I have two more cool ones. One, I mentioned this, or Jenny mentioned this and did a good job, so I'm gonna go with Nancy Perkins, that our vote after will be underneath. Review and update Esser Grant. So we mentioned this way back in August. We've run the numbers. Sue Day's done a a wonderful job looking at our Esser Grant. I think we potentially will have funds available. Originally, we wanted to put in a court for our middle school children to have outside space, to be able to play basketball, tennis, pickleball when they're outside. We don't have such a space here at our middle school. Some of them are past the point of playing on the playground and would like other things. So I'd love the board to approve amending the Esser Grant to approve a multipurpose tennis, pickleball, basketball court at our middle school, obviously pending D O E approval and funding available and all those things. But can Miss Day amend our grant and add and try and request a court at our middle school? That's the consideration. Jenny?
Second.
Jolene?
Discussion. Maggie. Carl, how, how large is this court? How is it like? The one at high school?
No, it'll be one tennis court with some hoops on it, some pickleball. So it's basically one tennis court fenced in with some basketball hoops and pickleball lines, one court.
Somebody have a question, take turns.
Yeah, I know.
And let's vote. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Thank you.
All right, Miss Day, we're rolling on that one. Thank you. And the last one is grant for computer labs. It's super cool. I'm having you vote after the fact, so no pressure, but if you don't vote, to say yes, and I probably don't need a vote, I just want you to go eyes wide open. Sue and Jen Lawton did a terrific job applying. The state put out grants for computer labs in your school. It was like one lab per classroom for 100 kids in your school. Sue and Jen got together. The timeline was such that I couldn't get you to approve it or even really discuss it with you before. It came out sometime in September. It was due, I think Sue texted me, Carl, you need to sign right now, tonight. It was due like September 30th or something like that, so I couldn't get to you beforehand. But I'd love you to know that we're doing it. Sue will fill in the details. We know this is out of my wheelhouse, but I'd love you to approve it. We've already submitted it, just to be super clear, so if you don't want us to, we'll pull back. But we've submitted for a computer grant. That Sue Day is gonna fill you in the details. At the end, I'd like you to vote to say yes that we did this.
We received notification on September 15th that we were eligible for one unit per school. The next week it came out it was one unit per 100 students. So actually Jen and I met with all the building principals who also met with some key people in their buildings. And so what we selected at the elementary for curriculum committee members, they might remember, they were little Spiros. They were little ball robots that students could control. We are ordering two of those kits, each valued at $5,000 for the elementary school and one for the middle school. There was option number two, which is virtual reality. They're called Merge Cubes. So they're little cubes that when connected to a program actually show something in 3D. So like in this picture, students could hold it and then they could manipulate a fish. They could see a planet. They could be looking at a mountain. It's pretty incredible. So we ordered one of those, again valued at about $5,000 each, one for the elementary, one for the middle school. And then the third option was called Coding. They are fancy, fancy Lego robotics kits. And there's an elementary option, elementary, middle school. We're ordering one of those for the middle school and then two for the high school that we're super excited about using in our engineering and design class. So we have already received approval for $40,000 worth of computer science materials, so.
Sue, could you just refresh the board who Jen is?
Oh, sure. So Jen Lawton is our tech director, director of technology. So she met, and then we met separately with each building principal who had shared these options with some of their staff members. But it was an incredibly quick timeline and confusing for most school districts where this came from all of a sudden with a, a less than two week turnaround, but.
Thank you. Jolene?
Sue, when you say we've already been approved for $40,000 worth of equipment, does that mean, are you talking about based on the enrollment? That, that means if we get the grant, we've been approved for that amount?
We, they already approved our grant. They said we can, they're, they're willing to order all of this for us.
So we're getting your approval after the fact, just because of the timeline. And to be frank with you, we probably don't, don't need your approval because in our budget book, we can apply for grants and use money that we get, but I just want you all to know, it's a super cool thing. I'd like it on TV. I'd like you to approve it. I'd like, yay, great work, Sue and Jen. Way to get that grant. It's gonna be awesome for our kids.
Okay.
So consideration to approve the district application for the computer science lab grant.
Is that your motion? You had your hand up.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Nancy, all right.
Oh, second.
Nancy and Jenny.
All those in favor?
Awesome team.
Thank you.
Super cool. All right, I think that, oh, let me just read, there might be some, some folks watching. Appointments this month, Kim Brunel, specialized Ed Tech at our high school. Brian Worwell, special Ed Tech at our middle school. Isabel, Isabel Ram, Ed Tech at our elementary school. Jess Benson, part-time library Ed Tech at our high school. Karen Bousier, Title I Ed Tech at our elementary school. And Matthew Brown, our JV girls' basketball coach. So that was our appointments for the month, and that's all I have.
Okay.
And it would be just executive sessions, Mr. Capano, Mr. Stevenson.